Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Howell Township Planning Board Thursday, October 17th, 2019, 7:00 PM regular meeting to order. Eileen, read the opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the fire prevention code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boyle.
Present.
Mr. Durado.
Here.
Mr. Husser.
Here.
Chief Kudrick.
Here.
Mr. Nacastro has been excused. Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Tannenhaus.
Here.
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Everett has been excused. Deputy Mayor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Chairman Nash.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. This time, I would like to ask everyone to please rise and for the pledge allegiance to the flag, and please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders, both here and abroad, and put a good word in for the Yankees for tonight.
(inaudible)
All right, we're just going to go through some administrative paperwork first. We have approval of a whole set of minutes. First one is approval of the regular meeting minutes for May 9th, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Durado, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhaus, Mr. Seaman, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second. Thank you.
Mr. Durado.
Yes.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is the regular meeting of May 16th, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Kuzer, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to memorialize or accept the minutes for May 16th.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Husser.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next one is the regular meeting of June 6th, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Durado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve June 6th minutes.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Durado.
Yes.
Mr. Husser.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is the regular meeting of June 20th, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Durado, Mr. Kuzer, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Schneider, second.
I got that. Mr. Durado.
Yes.
Mr. Husser.
Yes.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes.
And Chairman Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Last one is the regular meeting of July 18th, 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhaus, Mr. Seaman, Deputy Mayor O'Donnell, and myself. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
That was Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence, but the last application on the agenda, if you just want to make an announcement, they have to be rescheduled because their notice was insufficient. So, they're going to reschedule and renotice everyone. And that's for Smith Family Properties.
Yes. Mr. Cucciaro, would you please make the announcement?
No, there's no, I mean, we're not carrying a notice, so, I mean, do we have any anticipated date?
No.
All right, so, if you received a notice for tonight's meeting, you'll receive another one. They have to renotice. We have not selected a date yet, but if you received a notice for tonight, you will receive another notice in the mail.
This is for case number SP 1041A, Smith Family Properties LLC.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing that, our first application that we will hear tonight is the continuation of case number SP 1062, JP Morgan Chase Bank, NA. It's for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance. It's the application of JP Morgan Chase Bank NC as applicant and PMG New Jersey LLC as owner, seeking preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variances to remove all existing site improvements and construct a one-story bank with drive-through ATM service and parking for 23 vehicles, lighting and landscaping improvements, and signage on premises known as Block 54.01, Lot 8, 4001, US Highway 9 North at Altrich Road. Counsel.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jennifer Porter. I'm an attorney with Kiesa, Sheehanian, and Gianna Tomasi located in West Orange, New Jersey, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant JP Morgan Chase Bank. As the board may recall, we previously provided testimony at the September 4th, 2019 hearing, at which time we provided site plan engineering testimony, architectural testimony, and some operations testimony. The board at that meeting had raised a number of questions with respect to the circulation at the rear of the site. In addition, they had requested that we look at the lighting in terms of spillage onto Route 9 and potentially provide for greater lighting in that area. And there were also a number of questions with respect to one of the ancillary components of the site which provided for Amazon lockers. We have since looked at all three of those issues and provided revised plans to the board addressing all of those items. And so what we'd like to do this evening is begin by recalling our site engineer who can briefly address the lighting and the site circulation issue by explaining to the board exactly what was done to address the board's comments. With respect to the other issue concerning the Amazon lockers, we did extensive research in terms of how it relates to the overall use of the site. We looked at, you know, what operations are involved in terms of adding those lockers and ultimately determined that, you know, in light of various reasons, you know, underperformance at other sites, the fact that, you know, it's a very new product that's being introduced to a number of Chase Bank sites that ultimately, at this location, it wasn't needed at this time. And so we're continuing to explore whether or not we could potentially put lockers at other existing banks inside Howell Township and in the surrounding areas, but at this time, we're no longer proposing that as part of this application. So what we'd like to do in terms of the testimony this evening...
Just before you go on, I just want to make clear for the record, you know, for future purposes, that's the applicant's decision tonight. I mean, there were questions. They made their own business decision. I just want to say there's certainly no bar to them in the future if they decide that they want to go forward with something like that, bringing in other application to the board.
Great, thank you. So in terms of the testimony this evening, as I indicated, we would begin with very brief testimony by our site engineer. That would be followed by some additional operations testimony. We noticed at the last meeting that the board had a couple of questions. We had had our construction representative testify in terms of operations, but some of the types of questions that were being asked, we felt may be better answered by our real estate representative for the entire state of New Jersey, who could address the specifics in terms of, you know, the various operations going on at this site, employees and otherwise, and can potentially address other questions that the board may have in terms of the operational nature of this site and this particular bank. After we give our operations testimony, our original intention and our intention this evening is to provide brief testimony in some additional areas. We would do landscape architecture solely to address the plantings provided on our landscape plan and to address any comments with respect to that plan. We would provide brief environmental testimony. We know the board had had some questions with regard to, you know, the landlord's responsibility and what, if any, reports or, you know, due diligence in the environmental arena had been done at our site. So we have our environmental consultant present. We have our traffic engineer to go through our traffic report, to talk about queuing at the site, which was one of the questions in one of the consultant reports. He'll also speak to parking utilization, since there were some questions related to the number of parking spaces proposed as it relates to the overall use, and to address the traffic study that was prepared for this site, and as well as to touch upon DOT permitting for US Route 9. And then we will end with our planning testimony in support of not just the bulk variances, but also the design waivers. So if the board has no questions for me, I'd like to begin by recalling Martin Swaggard from Core States.
That's fine.
Yeah, if you could just state and spell your name for the record again.
Martin Swaggard, that's S-W-A-G-G-A-R-D.
Okay, Mr. Swaggard, I just remind you, you remain under oath.
Thank you. Yes, that... Hello, can you hear? As Ms. Porter was explaining, we made, to the site, we made, upon the recommendations of the board, we made two changes.
Mr. Swaggard, is this a new exhibit? Do we have...
No, I believe it's more.
It was submitted before, but we've made some minor changes to the site, so it's...
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
Can I ask if we can move that closer, please?
Sure.
We, um, excuse me, Laura, we don't have the rendered version?
I don't think they're part of your set.
Are they not? Were we didn't? They're on our uploaded. We also have our...
Is it a disc you gave me the last time?
So that was all of our revised site plans, and then we have exhibits, which we updated the exhibit list to show a color-rendered site plan. So we have, we have a flash drive that...
Then Laura can put it on.
Let's just, so is this marked or not?
No.
Okay.
I thought it was part of the site.
All right, so...
And I can't, if you just want me to refer to the regular site plan?
This will be A17?
We can mark it as long as... You just have to tell us what it is.
This is just basically a rendered, a colorized site plan, essentially, just...
Color rendering of the revised site plan?
Correct.
And is there a date?
It's prepared by Core States, dated October 8th, 2019.
October 8th, 2019?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So as I mentioned, one of the more significant changes we made was to address some concerns with circulation around the site. The rear drive aisle used to be two-way. We, by adding signage and striping, we are making this complete, this a one-way aisle in the back. So if you enter off of Aldrich, you can't access this row, you'll have to circulate around the site. And that addresses one of the board's concerns. It's a better product now, we feel, as well, and shouldn't result in any issues. The second concern of the boards was, we actually got a comment that even though we are asking for a design waiver to have a little bit of extra light, which results from the fact that we need to comply with New Jersey State ATM lighting standards, we got some comments to actually remove some of the house side shields on the front of the site. So I'm going to refer to our lighting plan, which is actually, was submitted as part of the set, as Sheet C5. So we removed the house side shields from the proposed light on Altrich and from the proposed light on Route 9. So just to provide a little bit of extra light on those roads upon the board's recommendations. And NJDOT had no objections to that as well. We expect to get their permit soon, too. And that's basically about it.
Does the board have any questions? Anyone in the public would like to come up and ask questions of this witness? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Let's move on.
Next, I would like to call Susan Cunningham from Chase Bank.
Hey, do you swear or affirm from the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Susan Cunningham. It's S-U-S-A-N. Last name is C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M.
Ms. Cunningham, basically, you have to eat the mic.
Okay, thank you.
We have to get you on the record, that's why.
Okay. Do you want me to redo?
No, that's okay.
Okay, Ms. Cunningham, could you please provide the board with your background and professional experience at JP Morgan Chase Bank?
I am the market director of real estate for the bank. I handle the New Jersey area and one of the boroughs, the Staten Island Borough, for the bank. I've been with Chase Bank for 22 years and have done the real estate for that time while I was there.
Great, so is it fair to say that you've worked on hundreds, if not thousands, of bank deals throughout those 22 years?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, great. And could you please speak to the number of employees in connection with the proposed Chase Bank?
In our standard branches, which this will be, we normally have eight to 12 employees. Eight is probably the average that we will have. 12 will be the most on a very busy day. That will include tellers, that will include the branch manager, it will include bankers, and it will include what we call partners, which may be our business banking professionals, our investment people. We also may have the market director who handles a group of branches in the area that may be there for the day to help out, but they will all be doing, you know, all there to help customer service.
Great, and could you please address the hours of operation for the proposed bank?
The bank is 8:30 to 6:00 Monday to Friday, and 9:00 to 2:00 on Saturday.
Great, so Ms. Cunningham, one of the questions that came up at the last meeting related to the number of parking spaces that were proposed for this particular branch in connection with the number of employees and the different types of services that are being provided by this bank. And so in your opinion, in terms of being the market director for real estate and developing other banks, not just in this general area, but throughout the state, are 23 parking spaces sufficient to serve both the employees and the customer base anticipated for this bank?
Yes, we have found that 23 is a good number. We have anywhere between 20 and 25 is pretty much our sweet spot that we have for, in terms of, on a packed day with customers as well as the employees, we think 23 is sufficient.
Great, and can you speak to the specific issue in terms of deliveries to the bank on a daily or a weekly basis? What types of deliveries does the bank receive?
The standard deliveries in terms of, they may have a bank delivery of cash, which will come in by armored car. They may have deliveries in terms of office supplies, and they may have their standard US mail service.
Great, and the armored car would park directly in front of the Chase Banks, would not utilize a parking space?
Correct.
And in terms of the other pickups that are anticipated or deliveries, they would essentially use one of the parking spaces for the limited period that they're at the site?
Correct, nothing large comes into our location. They would fit it to a normal parking spot.
So is it a common occurrence that typically Chase Banks don't require a loading space because of the types of deliveries and limited nature in terms of truck traffic that you would see at that site?
Correct.
Lastly, just in terms of refuse and trash pickup, if you could just briefly describe, you know, what typically is done in terms of waste at the site with respect to, for example, papers with regard to, you know, private banking or confidential bank matters versus, you know, typical food waste perhaps by the employees?
So we, any paper that goes out, it would not go into the garbage, it goes into a special shred bin, and that gets picked up as needed. And that would be in a small van type thing that they would pick up, and that's on an as-needed basis. It could be once a week, it could be once every other week. It just depends on how much shredded garbage they may have. And then in terms of food, the only other thing they have would be employee lunches, small garbage, coffee cups, things like that. That is taken care of by our cleaning staff, and they take that with them when they leave.
And so for that reason, is it typical to see in an average Chase Bank branch, you know, in terms of the site plan, that it would not contain a refuse container because of the limited nature in terms of the trash that's generated?
That is correct.
So Ms. Porter, just on that, you know, if the basis for the board accepting that is, you know, the system that you just outlined, I mean, there's no objection to placing that as conditions in the resolution?
We would have no issue with that because that's typical Chase operations, so that would be fine.
Okay.
Ms. Newman, the 23 parking spaces, in accordance with our ordinance?
Yes, this site does not require relief as it relates to the number of parking stalls.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I'm fine with that. It's just that I'm playing with the math, and you're telling me, let's play the worst scenario, you're packed condition, it's 12 employees. I'm assuming you may have 10 people that are coming into the branch? I'm not talking about what utilizes the ATM.
In terms of employees. Where employees, so you would have 10 employees and maybe 10 customers come in at the same time?
And you've never experienced where people... You've never experienced a situation where you don't have enough parking?
We have not, we have not experienced that of late, and in all of the branches that we've done lately, that has not been an issue.
Okay. Board have any questions? Show Mr. Durado.
Is this? I thought... Yeah. Is this a, I thought this was a financial service branch, not a traditional bank?
It's both. The way that our Chase, we are more than just a traditional branch. We also do investments, we also do, so we have, we consider ourselves an advice center, let's put it that way. You can come in there if you want a mortgage, you can come to see us if you want investment advice and want to open a portfolio. We have all of, we have that, as well as your traditional deposit, checking, and savings account.
Okay, all right. So we were talking where it was a traditional bank, and you were asking about, and that was something different or like...
No, the last time we left it, it was, we came at the end to understand it was a financial situation that did have advisors, but it also had, I believe there's two telestations within the branch?
There will be two telestations within the branch, as well as the electronic ATMs.
Yeah. So you were good with the traffic and everything?
Yeah, okay, okay. And the traffic engineer is going to come up over a minute and a half. Does the board have any questions? No? Seeing none, I'll open this portion up. Would anyone like to come up and ask questions of this witness? If so, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and let's continue.
Great, next I would like to call Jim Mazuco, our landscape architect from BW Bosenberg and Company.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name.
Jim Mazuco, M-A-Z-Z-U-C-C-O.
Mr. Mazuco, could you please provide the board with your background and qualifications?
Sure. I received a bachelor's of landscape architecture from the University of Georgia. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey, Connecticut, and registered in the state of New York as a landscape architect. I testified in front of numerous boards, including City of Summit, Milburn Township, Burners Township, Burnsville Borough, and a few others as well.
All right, just two standard questions. Your license is current with the PE Board?
Architectural Board.
Architectural, I'm used to the PE Board.
Yes, yes, it is. It's current.
And have you have any, have you had any complaints against you, or are there any pending complaints?
No, none.
Okay, we'll accept him as an expert in landscape architecture.
Okay.
So Mr. Mazuco, did you prepare the landscaping plans that were submitted as part of the site plan set in connection with this application?
Yes, I did.
Great, and can you please walk the board through the landscaping and planting schedule in connection with the proposed application?
Sure. Starting on the top of the page or the eastern side of the property...
What drawing are you...
This is the landscape plan dated April 18th, last revised October 2nd, 2019. Sheet one of two.
Towards the rear of one of those packages I gave you.
We have two packages here, that's why I'm asking.
Second page from the back.
Second page from the back of this...
Yes, the second package.
Okay, thank you.
So again, starting along the top of the page or the eastern side of the property, we have a row of evergreen shrubs lining that edge, as well as three shade trees. The three shade trees would be red maples, and then the evergreen shrubs would be a mix of Ilex Green Luster and cherry laurel autolucin. And in front of those, we have a mix of low-growing perennials. Those would be, that we have Coryopsus, a full moon is that, it's a yellow flowering, low-growing perennial, just to get some seasonal color in there as well. As you move south along that same property line, we switch from the autolucin and Ilex Green Luster mix to Andromeda in the back in that one corner there. And in front of that, we have again some low-growing perennials, which is Aruncus, Misty Lace. As you come around, coming down to the west, we switch back to the autolucin evergreen shrubs, which are also, again, evergreen. We come to kind of a pinch point there where the driveway kind of comes close to the property line there, so we kind of had, didn't have a lot of room for the evergreen shrubs, so we switched that to a ornamental grass, that's a fountain grass, Calumma grossis. And then we switched back again to the cherry laurel, the autolucin cherry laurel, again, that evergreen hedge to continue along towards Route 9. As we get closer to Route 9, we switch to a more flowering shrub there, that's Clethera compacta, which is a white flowering shrub, usually in July, August, it's flowering. And then on that corner there, we have on the south side of the entrance off of Route 9, there is a willow oak, and below that is planted deciduous low-growing shrub of Roos aromatica. As you go to the north, on the other side of the entrance, we have a small planting of daylilies there, just again to get some seasonal color. And then we continue with the evergreen hedge to provide screening of the parking. That is again the Ilex Green Luster, and that is interrupted in two places with the shade trees, again with the same tree that's on the south side, those are the willow oaks. As you get closer to the intersection of Aldrich and Route 9, we have a small planting there where the sign is, there's a low, a rose planted there, a ground cover rose, and some nepeta, which is a purple flowering, low-growing perennial. Continuing along Aldrich, back to the other entrance, we have another willow oak, and then again also below that is the Green Luster Evergreen Hedge, and so again some perennials, some geranium, another purple grow, low-growing perennial, and Caryoptera, which is another summer, a low-growing shrub, again, purple flower, and another group of daylilies there as well. We were not able to do a continuous hedge only because we're kind of dealing with a site clearance issue. There's a dash line which you can kind of see cuts through that same plant bed... There's a, a dash line which you can kind of see cuts through that, that same plant bed and actually cuts across part of the driveway and then wraps around Route 9. So we were kind of limited as far as where we could put that evergreen hedge. So that's kind of the, the way we kind of designed that, to try and work around that and get as much screening there as we could as possible.
Can I just interrupt for you, Laura? Is that part of that parking lot area within municipal right of way?
No. The plantings are all proposed outside of the right of way.
No, what about that dash line that he just referred to along the Aldridge Road frontage?
I mean, I have the rendering up here.
They call it the slope line.
Correct, yeah.
It's just a slope, isn't it? I don't think that's the right of way. The right of way is clearly shown here along Aldridge.
The right of way actually cuts through the sidewalk at that same point. If you look, if you look through the, the accessible ramp, that's where the, the right of way line is.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, I had some comments that we went back and forth a little bit. Pleasure to work with having a landscape architect on, you know, doing these plans. You know, I have no complaints at all. The, the site will look really nice. You know, we went back and forth with just a couple of things. I had made some suggestions and, yeah, I mean, they did, they went above and beyond, definitely with the plant material.
Thank you. Just, just one question from my own
Sure.
I'm sure that the chief might be interested. The, the shrubs at least along the Aldridge and the Route 9 frontages.
Yes.
They're low enough that they would not obstruct the sight line of a passing patrol car into the
Well, the ordinance requires them to be four feet at, at installation and that's what we're proposing.
Is that true? Chair?
Three feet? I'm sorry, I thought it was four. Because that's what the report said, I thought.
You have them at first.
Okay, yeah. So we propose them, yeah, to be maintained at three feet. We can actually add a note to there so that they're maintained at that height.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that you did just so that it's on record.
Yep.
You're okay with that, Chief Frank?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I interrupted your testimony.
That's okay. So we got around to the Aldridge entrance and then opposite that, as you come in further property, there's another large planting island. Again, there's another, that's actually a maple, red maple on that island. And then below that, we had some low-growing grasses, just a carrex, and then some nepeta as well, again, a flowering perennial. And on the, towards the, towards the parking area, we had some itea, which is a flowering, another white flowering shrub. That one is deciduous. And then beyond that, the backside of that is again the sumac, the aromatic sumac. And then we have a planting, foundation planting around the, the perimeter of the building. On the north side, we have a, a kind of a hedge. It's not quite straight hedge, but it kind of undulates with the, the building outline of cephalotaxis. It's a low-growing evergreen. And then in front of that, again, we're kind of introducing some low-growing perennials just again to get some seasonal color there. Coming around to the west side of the building, we are again kind of continuing with the evergreens, low-growing evergreens in front of the building. There's again another ledge of ilex there. And then the opposite side is Clethera, another, a different type of ilex on that side as well. It's a low-growing evergreen shrub. Coming around to the south side, we have another grouping of Clethera and then a, the low-growing grasses below that and the carrex. And that continues basically the whole length of the building there through where the drive-through is to the opposite side. Again, another grouping of Clethera and then abelia and the upper island there and then some juniper on the outer edge of that as well. And then along the eastern side, there's just a small slim planting bed there, which we're treating with vinca and some, another ornamental grass on the southern side. We have some taller windows there. We just kind of took advantage of that and put a little bit taller planting on that side.
Is that his testimony?
That concludes his testimony.
Board, have any questions of the landscape architect?
Thank you.
No? Yes, it's very nice.
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll open it up. Would anyone in the audience like to come up and ask questions of the landscape architect? Seeing none, close that portion and let's move on.
Great. Next, I would like to call David Shropshire from Shropshire Traffic Engineering.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
David Shropshire, S.H.R.O.P.S.H.I.R.E.
Great. Mr. Shropshire, could you please provide the board with your background and education?
I'm a professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Both licenses are up to date with the compliance. I've been practicing in New Jersey for over 30 years. I've testified before this board, before we moved to this building. So it's been quite a while since I've been here. But I've also testified and been qualified before over 200 municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey on a variety of development projects.
We'll accept his credentials as a traffic engineer.
Mr. Shropshire, did you prepare a traffic study in connection with this site?
We did.
Great. Could you please walk the board through the basis for that study and your findings?
I'm going to kind of give a broad overview.
You can use that other mic if you want.
Sounds good.
It'll pick you up easier. Thank you.
I will give a broad overview of what transpired. We met with NJDOT based on them having jurisdiction over Route 9 and also the portion of Aldridge that's within the jug handle ramp. Obviously, the existing site has two accesses on both street frontages. DOT specifically wanted to have one access on both of the streets. I wanted them to be as far away as possible from the signalized intersection. Therefore, provides the basis of a plan to have the right turn in, right turn out as far south as we can on Route 9 and have a modified access for left turn in, right turn in and only right turn out on Aldridge. So the left turn out does not, will not occur on the site. It'll be restricted. And that was the plan that NJDOT is now reviewing for permitting to revise what's out on the site. We also had to provide information to them with regard to what the trip generation is going to be for the site. And that was being compared to what was originally there, their service station. And there were some positive comparisons there based on permitting that there was going to be an overall reduction in site traffic just based on a generic gas station versus this, this proposed bank. So that was a positive. To give you an idea, we're talking about 62 trips being generated during the critical weekday PM peak hour. That would be using the NJDOT criteria, which is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers criteria. So that's kind of the, the worst case scenario during the critical PM peak hour. Not a whole lot of traffic. About a third of that traffic is going to be passed by traffic, traffic that's already on the roadway, not newly created because banks do draw from the passing drive stream of traffic. From that, we did do an analysis. Obviously, there's delays at the signalized intersection. Aldridge in particular, during that critical PM peak hour, has poor levels of service and delay. We're not creating any real additional issues. Then the reason being, there's not a whole lot of traffic that's being generated by this during that peak hour, during that critical peak hour. And that's what's reflected in the study. Moving from the external to the internal, the data that we have collected on freestanding banks of about this size, this configuration, are showing a peak parking generation between 16 to 20 vehicles. So the data that we have are kind of independent of the Chase data confirms what you've heard from the Chase operational folks. In addition, having a drive-through ATM is kind of new. It's not like the old drive-through windows of banks where you had to have a lot of storage area. We have done surveys and have reviewed some surveys of, of different banks that just have ATM lanes and two vehicle queuing spaces for that have shown to be more than sufficient to accommodate what the peak demands will be just based on how that operates. So from the revisions that were done for the circulation to the rear with one-way flow in the rear with the number of parking spaces, the queuing distance that we have for the ATM drive-through, the site plan appears to confer, to comply with all general accepted traffic engineering standards and also with the operational characteristics that Chase anticipates for this location. And that was about as summarized as I could give it.
Mr. Shropshire, can I just ask a question? So maybe to help summarize and help the board. The traffic generation here is so insignificant that it didn't even trigger a DOT application, right?
Well, actually, it did trigger an application because we had to close two of the driveways
Okay.
out there. So that's part of what we had to do.
Well, then, my other question is, the DOT has reviewed the ingress and egress and safety and the traffic and, you know, they've either found it acceptable or they're going to have to find it acceptable.
That's correct. They're in the process of reviewing the application right now. But it was based on discussions that we had with DOT how the access configuration was planned and designed. There was also one other thing in Ms. Newman's letter with regard to providing a table that had the levels of service and we will provide that to her office for review. We, we put our levels of service on figures and then we gave a table that had the delay configurations. We'll just combine that information and, and respond to that comment.
But in, in doing that, none of the levels of service are going to be like an E or anything? I mean, there's, they're going to remain at acceptable levels?
Well, actually, we do at the intersection of Aldridge and 9. There are some failure level of service, some Fs, some delays of that order of magnitude. We are not contributing to any great deal to that. I looked at the overall delay just because of some of the review comments that I saw. And overall, the intersection, it looked like during that critical weekday PM peak hour, the delay might increase about a second and a half per vehicle. So it's an inconsequential increase. And I think the board's listener is, is correct. If we weren't closing
You're a little too far north for that. We're attorneys up here.
Well, if, if we were the board attorney, if we were not to touch any of the accesses out on the site, we would get what's called a letter of no interest from the NJDOT. But because we are modifying and improving it, and I think improving the overall safety, we have to go in for a permit to close those driveways.
So just then also, the, the intersections that may be failing and whatever delays or queuing that results, none of that impacts the safety of the ingress and egress to this site?
That's correct. This site, as it's laid out, is an improvement in overall safety by reducing the number of conflict points that are on both of these streets. And especially considering the fact that there are some delays out there during that critical PM peak hour.
Okay.
So basically, your testimony is since you're reducing the amount of trips generated by the site, you don't even really have to provide a level of service analysis because you're reducing the amount of trips generated?
Well, and that was one of the things that was brought out by Ms. Newman's review. The actual trips that are being generated by this gas station are, don't meet the average levels that NJDOT would use for the site. So in other words, we were coming in for the site for a blank sheet gas station. They would expect a much higher level of trip activity than what's being experienced out there right now, which is probably why this site is looking to turn over from a gas station to a different use.
Okay, I just have one question here. With your testimony, you said that the Aldridge Road access is going to be a right in, left in and only a right out. I call your attention to the site plan that, or if we could put the site plan back up. It does show the stop bar, but I would ask if we could amend the plan to show a right-only arrow on the pavement and also on the stop sign. Also add the only. I think it's the R62 or something like that.
On the outbound side, that's completely reasonable, I guess.
Board, have any questions?
Nope. That was, that was exactly my question was the right out.
You're getting to be a traffic engineer now, too.
No, I just live down the block.
All right. Board, have any other questions? Seeing none, I will open this up. Anyone in the public would like to come up and ask questions of the traffic engineer? Seeing none, we'll close this portion and let's move on.
Next, I would like to call Claire Sullivan from Apex.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Claire Sullivan, C.L.A.R.E.S.U.L.L.I.V.A.
Ms. Sullivan, could you please state your background and education for the board?
I have a bachelor's degree in biology. I have a master's degree in environmental science. I have about 35 years of experience doing environmental assessments, due diligence, and site investigations.
And do you hold any professional licenses or certifications?
Yes, I have a certified hazardous materials manager, certified safety professional.
But you're not an LSOP?
No, I'm not.
And you're qualifying her for?
We would qualify her really essentially as a fact witness who performs environmental due diligence investigations on all Chase banks and can give the board some background in terms of what environmental testing was performed at this site and what the environmental responsibilities are on behalf of our landlord. But, you know, per the board's questions at the prior hearing.
Mr. Chairman, though, if I could, and certainly I defer to the board, I believe that was, it was agreed at the prior hearing that an RAO was going to be provided for the site.
And that's correct. So, you know, it was basically just to the extent that the board had any environmental questions. There were some comments in some of the consultant reports that specifically, and also the environmental commission had raised a question regarding the environmental condition of the property, which is why we brought Ms. Sullivan, you know, to the extent that it can be addressed by simply providing those documents where we agreed that we can certainly do that.
Does the RAO, I mean, is there an RAO? Or not yet? Well, actually, all right, Ms. Porter, if you're not going to answer that, then I guess the question, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Sullivan is not being offered as an expert witness. So we don't have to accept, you know, any expertise.
Yes, that's why, and she's a fact witness.
She would be a fact witness, that's correct.
Yes, you're just a fact witness. We can accept, you know, we don't even need to accept that.
Right.
So, okay. So then Ms. Sullivan, I guess, is, is there an RAO at this point?
There was an RAO issued for the site in 2012.
Okay, then, my question then is, if the applicant said they were going to give us an RAO and it's been hanging around for seven years, what, I mean, why wasn't it submitted?
Well, there, there's an RAO from, in 2012, which indicated that there was no exceedances of soil or groundwater.
That's not my question.
There will be, when the tanks, it's currently an active gas station. When the tanks are removed, there will be an RAO issued at the point that those are successfully removed in the event that there's contamination discovered when they are removed.
In the event that there's, so are you saying that there may not be another RAO?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there would be an RAO issued when, when the tanks are removed successfully.
Okay, no matter what.
No matter what.
When do you expect that to happen?
It was our understanding that in order for you to take ownership of this bank, you were going to have it. So would you be fair to say prior to the scheduling of a pre-construction meeting?
Yes.
So can we inform the board, Ms. Newman, exactly what we're doing here?
Well, I defer to the board as to whether or not you want to hear any testimony as it relates to the environmental conditions. I thought we addressed it previously and I'm satisfied that as long as we have an RAO issued for this property prior to them, you know, breaking ground and starting construction, that that's acceptable.
But that's seven years old.
No, Mr. Chairman, they have to get a new one.
I'll have to get a new one, okay.
They have one currently that says there's no exceedances. When they go in and remove the tanks, they need to make sure that the tanks weren't leaking and that's when a new documentation would be issued. And they had agreed that that would be provided prior to the scheduling of a pre-construction meeting. So prior to them being able to go, move forward with construction, they're going to have that document in hand.
Who monitors that at that time? Is that
Well, once you have an RAO, there is no monitoring.
No, I meant, who monitors that they get the RAO? Is that, is that something?
Howell Township's, in order to get to a pre-construction meeting in Howell Township, there's, you have a whole engineering department that goes through. You have myself who goes through every condition and then you have an engineering department that goes through all the conditions, all the outside agency approvals and makes sure everything is in hand.
So to say it in a different way, before they actually get their building permit to actually start building, they have to get the RAO.
No, before, before they're going to have a pre-construction meeting, you cannot get building permits in Howell without a pre-construction. in Howell without a preconstruction meeting.
Then respectfully, I don't know if anything that Ms. Sullivan would offer us tonight would be of value, I mean, would be of value, but, I mean, I don't think that we're having testimony then that was really going to be something that we're going to-
Yeah, it's one of these scenarios where, you know, Chase is going to be a tenant, correct, on this property?
Right.
And the, I'm assuming that the current service station has an LSRP that's working on the site, and it's your obligation to remediate any impacts.
Correct. To the extent that when they pull the tanks, any remediation is required, they would absolutely be required to have an LSRP and to remediate it. And we would, of course, on behalf of Chase, require that as well as a condition in terms of our acceptance of the overall property.
And I guess my question goes to, are there any stipulations with Chase as a tenant where, you know, the RAO that you're going to receive will be an area of concern, RAO? It's not going to be a site-wide RAO. Does Chase require site-wide RAOs? Or do they, you know, for instance, you have a, the tanks, they're removed, you get an area of concern RAO. In the service station itself, possibly there was hydraulic lifts that may have leaked. There's floor drains. There could be numerous areas of concern that need to be addressed under that. Would they all be obviously RAOed individually as AOCs?
We completed a Phase Two environmental site assessment that addressed the hydraulic lifts, the former hydro lifts, former septic tanks, and, you know, other areas in the service station. And they all came, all our results were below NJDP criteria for both soil and groundwater.
You have an objection to providing the Phase Two to the board?
Not at all.
As a condition of approval?
We can provide that.
And is there, there's monitoring wells on the property currently?
Yeah, I believe there are.
And is there a CEA on the property?
No.
A CEA is a classification exception area for, it's basically extent of groundwater contamination on a property.
Is monitoring water today available to us?
Again, it's one of these scenarios where the service station has obligation with their LSRP to remediate and clean up and issue, so, but I guess my question is, what is Chase requiring? If they're just requiring AOC-specific RAOs, that's fine. You know, I had numerous questions here from last time that are basically being answered. So, you know, as long as they comply with the LSRP, you know, the current property owner, I don't really see an issue here.
And I just, just for purposes of the board, the impact of that, as far as we are concerned, you know, we really don't have a lot of impact on the LSRP process. However, to the extent that a required remediation would also require some change in the improvements on the property, then that's absolutely something that, you know, is within our jurisdiction and could, you know, compel the applicant to return for an amended approval.
Yeah, and that's where I was getting, Ron. You know, if these tanks do get removed and, you know, lo and behold, you have groundwater contamination during development, you might have to put in some type of vapor barrier or sub-slab deeper preservation system or something like that, you know, that's my concern.
Is it my understanding that all of that would be the responsibility of the landlord? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But the, the impact, you know, could affect the applicant. So-
Absolutely, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's really, I mean, in the applicant-
Right. Everything is regulated by the state. It's really, I think what, you know, the board attorney is saying, it's almost outside essentially the purview of the board's jurisdiction as it relates specifically to the site plan application, but could potentially obviously impact it down the line to the extent that it would trigger the need for the site to be rearranged in any type of way, requiring a site plan amendment. But at this time, you know, we can provide the board just with the documentation that we have with respect to what's been done and, you know, obviously our Phase Two results.
And at the time of the preconstruction meeting, we'll have the RAO, and there can be an evaluation by the township's professionals at that time as to whether the improvements can remain where they have been approved.
And your due diligence, I mean, it was a Phase One, Phase Two, I'm assuming? Soil and groundwater?
Soil and groundwater.
And any groundwater impacts over standard? How many groundwater points did you take?
Four.
Four?
Okay. Board, have any other questions? No. Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Would anyone like to step up and ask questions of this witness? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of that, and let's move on.
Great. As our last witness, I'd like to call Keenan Hughes.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Keenan Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
H-U-G-H-E-S, and your first name?
K-E-E-N-A-N.
Okay.
Mr. Hughes, could you please provide your background and qualifications for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in New Jersey, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal of Phillips Price Planning Firm based in Hoboken. We advise municipalities and private sector clients throughout the state on planning and zoning matters, and I've been accepted as an expert by many municipalities in the state, including, I think, over a dozen in Monmouth County.
And as I asked the other professional witnesses, your license is current?
It is.
And there are no complaints against you or no previous complaints against you?
Never.
Okay. We will accept him as an expert in planning.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just as we're moving, you know, in any application, a previous complaint against someone which may have been dismissed, I don't think that that should be, you know, part of an applicant's, you know, maybe if there was an admonishment or something, but I don't think, you know, a professional should have to say that there was a previous complaint, you know, that was adjudicated and dismissed.
Well, I've been asked by my, the other boards that I testify or I handle, their attorneys have indicated that that could bear on the credibility.
You were going to base credibility on a dismissed complaint?
No, if it's dismissed-
That's what I'm saying. You said, but the question was, is there a previous complaint? And a previous complaint includes those that may have been dismissed. So I think we should just be a little more particular and say, have you ever been like admonished, you know, or has there been a complaint that was, a prior complaint that was found to be credible? But if we just say, have there been any prior complaints, those include complaints that may have been dismissed. That shouldn't bear upon whether we, you know, the weight that we give them.
All right, we'll work out the wording.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you. So as the planner on the application, my role was to evaluate the application from a planning viewpoint with an emphasis on the requested relief, so that's what I'll focus on. This site is located within the HC Highway Commercial Zone. This bank is a permitted use, and the overall site design is very much in keeping with its highway commercial context. We are requesting, one, possibly two variances. In addition, there's one existing nonconformity related to lot size, which obviously is not changing, it's not being exacerbated, and then several site design waivers, which I'll touch on in the course of the testimony. But to start with the requested C variance, which is for impervious coverage on the site, this variance can be justified on a C-two basis. The existing coverage on the site is 90.24 percent. It will be reduced to 77.49 percent. However, the requirement is 70 percent, so we do need that variance. However, it's important to keep in mind that the overall lot is actually 25 percent smaller than what's anticipated or required by the ordinance, so that's certainly a factor that's driving the need for the coverage variance. The purpose of the lot coverage standards typically relate to managing stormwater runoff, drainage. This will obviously be addressed as part of the site design. In fact, the overall site's going to be substantially enhanced with a lot of additional landscaping. There's also going to be improvements over the existing conditions relative to parking and circulation. So again, achieving that 70 percent is impractical due to the existing lot size in terms of accommodating this bank use, which is permitted on the site. I think the applicant has done a nice job of balancing landscaped area with the pavement. You know, the ordinance actually requires a 30-foot minimum driveway width, but that's not, that's not needed for this particular use. And so at 25 width, that's adequate, and it strikes the right balance between pervious and impervious coverage on the site. No impacts on neighboring properties due to the setbacks which can form for the building, and not to mention the site is actually bounded by parking lots for the shopping center. There was some question about whether a variance for a loading zone is required, but as you heard from the operational testimony, to the extent that the board does require that variance, it's clearly not needed for this bank use.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, the requirement of a loading stall falls under the design section of our code, not as a zoning section, so it would be a design waiver.
Understood, thank you. So the variance for impervious coverage can be justified, again, on a C-two basis. It would advance at least two purposes in the municipal land use law, purposes A and G, in that the development proposes redevelopment of an existing developed site with a permitted use, which is really going to aesthetically enhance the property and reduce the overall coverage which exists today, and it's a proposed use that's very appropriate for this highway commercial location. As for the negative criteria, the proposed deviation is not substantial in the context of this particular undersized lot. It's located along a developed commercial corridor, bounded by an office property and two main roads. No significant negative impacts on neighboring properties would result from the grant of the lot coverage variance. Again, any impacts here are being mitigated by the proposed landscaping and site design. Again, the site was previously developed with a much more intensive use, and the design will actually improve the overall site. As for the potential impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, I would just note that the proposed development complies with all but one bulk requirement for the zone, and this is largely driven by the size of the property. So therefore, the granting of the requested variance would not substantially impair the overall planning and zoning efforts of the township. Now with respect to the design waivers, we require these are justified under subsection 51 of the municipal land use law, so the board must find that they're reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the site plan review regulations. If literal enforcement is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. So the first one is for lighting. As you heard, this is largely driven by the regulatory requirements for ATM lighting at banks, but overall, I think the professionals agree, the overall lighting plan here is appropriate for the site and will not generate any substantial impacts on any of the surrounding properties. The driveway location and width are certainly, my understanding is there has been input from fire, and they are more than adequate to circulate the site. Both would be safe, and in fact, providing a narrower driveway than what's required is actually more beneficial from a coverage standpoint. We simply don't need the full 30-foot width driveway. Finally, with respect to the signage that's proposed, in my opinion, this relates in large part to the characteristics of the site being an undersized corner lot, which largely dictates where the parking and the access aisles will be located, and that in turn affects where the potential ground and directional signs are located on the site. With respect to the setback requirements, it's impracticable to comply with those, as the signs would be located really within the parking lot access aisles. So the proposed locations here are optimal for visibility. They will not have any negative impacts on the safety or circulation on the site or adjacent road network, and the total amount of combined wall projecting and ground signs are appropriate for the site, especially given the fact that it has two frontages. They are integral to the design of the building and in keeping with other examples of signage along the Route Nine corridor, again, consistent with the highway commercial context here. And then finally, I believe there's a waiver required for screening around the parking areas. This is also impracticable due to the safety considerations here for the bank and site distance issues for traffic. However, as you heard, we have a really nice landscaping plan for the overall site, which includes both trees and low-lying shrubs around some of the parking areas. So again, major improvement over the existing conditions, and for all those reasons, I believe both the variance for lot coverage and the various design waivers that we require satisfy the requirements under the municipal land use law. That concludes my testimony.
Board, have any questions to this witness? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public like to come up and ask questions of the planner? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public. Counselor?
That concludes our presentation.
Okay. At this time, if anyone would like to come up and offer any testimony, either opposed or for the application, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this session. All right, board, do we have a motion on this? Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve case number SP 1062 JP Morgan Chase Bank N.A. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Durado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
I will miss my favorite gas station, but yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
I'd like to say yes, and this is a very, very nice application, and welcome to Howell.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Never seen so much landscaping.
Certainly be better than what's out there right now.
Mr. Chairman, take five for a question.
We're going to take a five-minute break before we move to the next application.
The board will now reconvene.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Boyle?
Present.
Mr. Durado recused himself. Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro's been excused. Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett's been excused. Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Here.
And Chairman Nash?
Present.
You still have a quorum. Thank you.
All right, the next application we're going to do right now is case number SP 2901 H. Arnold Boulevard LLC and TTK Warehouse LLC. It's a final major subdivision. The application of Arnold Boulevard LLC and TTK Warehouse LLC is applicant's, being final, final major subdivision, to divide the property into 20 new single-family residential lots from three stormwater management lots. On premises noted at Block 4, Block 2, 3.01, 3.02, 4, 5, and 8, addresses 106 Arnold Boulevard. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Deputy Mayor, chief, members of the board, professionals and staff. Peter G. Locata of the law firm of Sonnablik Parker &amp; Selvers of Freehold, on behalf of the applicants, as you know, we're here tonight to request final subdivision approval. Our final subdivision plan does not deviate in any way from the preliminary plan previously presented and reviewed by the board at the end of last year.
Mr. Locata, as you said, this is for final, all right? We're just interested in compliance with the engineer's and the planner's letter of this. You can put your testimony on however you want, all right, but, you know, we can ask our engineer if this satisfies, and then we can go from there. It's your choice.
That would certainly be acceptable, Mr. Chairman. Please.
Okay. I think you got to get sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, we've specifically listed the conditions of the preliminary resolution of approval on page two. They start on page two. uh, resolution of approval on page two, they start on page two, and what you'll see is, um, everything has been satisfied with the, um, I don't want to say with the exception, we had had some technical comments, so there's a technical engineering review attached. I would ask, uh, Mr. Challoner, do you agree to address all of...
We just need to swear him in. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Stuart Challoner, C-H-A-L-L-O-N-E-R.
And Stuart with a U or a W?
A U, thank you.
Okay, if you could just qualify, Mr. Challoner.
Stuart, you are a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey, are you not?
Yes, I am.
And both of those qualifications are in good standing?
Yes, they are.
And have you testified before this board and other boards, uh, planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey in those capacities?
Yes, I do, yes, I have.
We'll accept him as an expert civil engineer.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Challoner, do you agree to comply with the items contained in our technical engineering attachment?
Yes, we do.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, with that, the board may recall, there was, uh, roadway improvements that needed to be installed along the entire Arnold, Arnold Boulevard frontage, that has been complied with, um, pavement specifications have been revised to comply with prior recommendations from the municipal engineer. Um, the Phase 1 report was required to be submitted, that was in fact done, so they have addressed the conditions of approval, the engineer has agreed to our technical comments, there are no variances or design waivers that were granted with the preliminary approval, nor are any required because there has been no changes in the design. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, that essentially takes us through all of our report, typically, we, we have discussion items and stuff of that nature, but because it was a final subdivision as indicated, we kind of focused on the conditions of approval and all of those have been addressed by the engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions with regard to the conditions. Uh, Mr. Locata, condition number five of the preliminary approval, the applicant was going to consider the dedication of additional land for municipal improvements between the grant of preliminary major, uh, and the filing of final, so what, what's the final resolution on that?
I understand there is some debt, uh, additional dedication area, and I would ask Mr. Challoner to, uh, address that question.
I think you've addressed it, I, I think what had happened was, there was an initial report, but by the first revision to the second revision, you did in fact provide the dedication or get that dedication to extend the frontage improvements along that out parcel?
That's correct.
Okay, and condition number six, the applicant shall comply with all recommendations from the Township Shade Tree Commission. That was, that was done?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it was.
The status of your outside agency approvals.
Uh, Mr. Challoner?
We have, uh, our DEP permits, um, both, uh, uh, stormwater discharge, wetland permits, uh, the flood hazard permits for, uh, the stream study, we have our, um, uh, Freehold Soil Conservation approval, we have our Monmouth County Planner Board approval, um, we're not, we're not required to, oh, we have Monmouth County Board of Health, uh, we're not required to get sewer water because there's no sewer water available.
So, to your knowledge, there are no outside agency approvals outstanding?
Outstanding, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other persons?
I'm sorry?
I was asking Mr. Kudrick.
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um, uh, let me just open it up to this witness, uh, the public to this witness. If anyone would like to step forward and ask questions of this witness, please do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of this witness. Um, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I would simply make the, uh, witness available to any questions the board members may have, but I have no additional direct testimony to solicit.
Okay. Well, I don't think the board has any...
I don't really have anything major, just, Ms. Newman, your, your October 11th Technical Review Number 5, is that what you're saying, that everything that was listed in there, the applicant's going to comply with?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any more questions? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to the public now for testimony. If anyone in the public would like to step forward and offer testimony, either against or for this application, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of this session. Any final comments?
Uh, we would submit to your discussion and appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, so this is just, um, voting for, um, approval of the final, and as Ms. Newman has indicated, the applicant has complied with all conditions of the preliminary approval. Um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for final major subdivision, a case number SD 2981F.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Mr. Tannenhouse, second.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Tannenhouse, do you want to give an update on the master plan?
Uh, well, we, we met last month and we started to discuss the, uh, the proposed zone changes, and there's going to be some further discussion with the town, with some key members of the committee, and then we're going to meet next week on our regular scheduled Thursday meeting to discuss those, uh, discussions and continue to move this forward.
Okay, anything else?
I'm just curious, Brian, when do you anticipate bringing this to the planning board?
When do we anticipate?
Yeah. A guesstimation, I know.
We're meeting with Jim...
Yeah, I think, I think you're meeting tomorrow and then, and then we're going to sit and discuss, I think, I don't think I can give you that answer until after that discussion and see how this is going to continue to play out. I think we'll have a better answer for that at the next planning board meeting. We have to meet at next week's, uh, subcommittee meeting and digest the additional information that we're asking for in order to be able to give ready type of recommendations. Right now, we're not in a position where I think we can make recommendations.
So, Peter, um, if we have the meeting tomorrow with Mr. Herman and then at our normal subcommittee meeting at the, uh, in the, in October, all right, um, if there's not significant changes, do you think that we could present to the board at the November, what's our meeting in November, 7th?
November 7th.
Yeah. Would we be able to present to the board for November 7th? Or is that asking a little bit...
You're not talking for a public hearing, are you?
Well, that's where I'm...
You don't have enough time.
Don't have enough time, all right.
We can shoot for our first meeting, in fact, do we have two meetings every...
Two meetings in December.
We can shoot for the first meeting in December.
That's where I was going.
Yeah.
And your meeting of the master plan subcommittee is early in November, it's November 12th because of Thanksgiving, so if you need to have another meeting in there, it's real early.
Okay.
And we don't know right now as we speak what, what the change is or if there's going to be any changes, so if we, if we, we would have to like go ahead and notice now without knowing whether there's going to be changes and we might have to answer it after that.
Right. So let's, uh, let's tentatively put on the calendar the December 5th meeting for the presentation of the master plan update.
The public hearing.
The public hearing for it, yes.
What's on that night? Do we have anything?
Monmouth Commerce.
I, no, I think it's Gil Petroleum, I think was carried to that.
Gil Petroleum, do you think?
I think so.
Okay.
We would also have to figure out, our first meeting in November, we have Monmouth Commerce coming back, they won't finish, so we'll have to figure out, you know, where they're going.
Where they're going.
Right. So, I, I think I would like to try to make the public hearing and the, um, the voting on the master plan update before the new year.
I have no objection to that.
Okay. All right, any reason to go into executive?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Seaman, motion, Mr. Boyle, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Thank you.